Somehow they.
Oh, I can try to close that.
Yes, I am.
Well, look at the.
And my old, my old eyes, my cataracty eyes.
Okay, hang on, so. They were gonna call meeting in order. Uh, roll call.
Councilmember.
Here.
Councilmember.
Wilson, councilmember Black.
Yeah.
Mayor Pro Tem Derringer.
Here.
Mayor Piper.
Here.
All right, we're gonna skip the pledge, ladies and gentlemen, do that once, we're gonna do, uh, someone needs to accept the blue folder.
I move to accept the, uh, blue folder item and thank you, B.
Second.
Oh, sec.
All favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, next, is there any public comment on anything non-on the agenda?
Well, it's not very.
Seeing none, we're gonna close the public comment, and then, okay, all right, so, thank you guys both for coming. Because there's all five of us, it is a public meeting, which means you both are gonna be in the, whoa, go ahead.
Just, uh, pardon the interruption, but the consent calendar has an item as well for approving the affidavit, the posting.
I wasn't looking at it.
I move the consent calendar.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Uh, thanks, sorry.
May I ask what you just did?
So, we did all the part that we have to do to be legally having a meeting.
Okay.
So that's now all there, we've done roll call, we've called the meeting to order, so now officially is the first part of this, which is because it's a public meeting and anyone can attend, which also means you guys can attend. So, we're gonna do is they, that they've have, we have some questions that are, someone put together, so we have questions, people might ask other questions, and what we're gonna do to try to keep this somewhat of whatever, each one of these has your name on it, and B's gonna pick one, and that's who's gonna go first.
All right, I guess we have to like.
Oh, jeez.
I don't know. All right, so. Says Hawkins.
Roger, come on up. All right, so, I guess the first thing is, Jim, do you want me to read through these, or do you wanna ask questions yourself, how do you wanna do it? Do you have a preference?
Roger goes first, he should at least hear the questions, so the panel will hear the questions before we're presenting them, so why don't we read all the questions to everybody, so they can both hear them, and he can take notes if he wants, he has a minute to collect his slots.
Okay.
I do.
Oh, you already have copies of the questions.
I do. Oh. I thought as I go through, 'cause I was gonna do them sequentially.
That's fine, so we don't need to, I just wanna make sure it was fair to everybody.
Yeah, we're trying to make it as fair as possible, this public things we're.
Sure.
Yep. Once I need prepared, let's just, all right, so why don't you just go ahead, if you're ready to, you can just answer them, that way it'll just be efficient.
And we don't, you don't need me to read the, the questions in, or just abbreviated ones. I'll play it by, I'll play it by ear and see if it works out.
Yes, perfect.
First, thank you for two things, one, the opportunity to be here, and second, for providing with us, both candidates with a copy of the questions concerning some of the matters that seem to be of interest to the council. I'll take those questions sequentially, try to answer them as briefly as I can, 'cause I know you're short on time, and if there are other questions as we go through this, um, I'm here to answer them. The first question, which took a little while, by the way, to think about, and that is a question as to, why do you wanna serve on the traffic commission? And I thought that was gonna be the easiest question to answer, you know, but it really wasn't, as I, I mean, as I thought about it. And we live in a great community, I've lived here for forty years, and I love this community. I've been a public servant, in many respects, my whole life, my whole adult life. But I got thinking that in this community, what do we have, eighteen hundred residents, something like that? We have two people that have showed up in order to offer their services to serve on the traffic commission. And, you know, and you, one would think there would be more, because if you ask everyone on this, in this community, do you support traffic safety? And I dare say that I'll say yes. And then you'd ask them, well, what do you think we should do in order to promote traffic safety in this community? You'd get a, a lot of different kinds of responses, and probably a lot of bovine stares from some people who just don't think about that, and we really need to do it. And that gets me to the answer to your question, I do think about those things. I've thought about them ever since I've been a resident in Rolling Hills, which has been for forty years, and in, as a matter of fact, in terms of traffic-related issues, I thought about them in the nineteen sixties when I was a deputy sheriff, and I roamed this community and provided a lot of enforcement services for it. I am concerned, as a resident, about what appears to me increasingly unsafe streets and trails. It's primarily the result, I think, of speeding motorists, but there are other issues involved that, that concerns me to the point that I think that something needs to be done to get the community behind policies and procedures that are gonna reduce that kind of, uh, speeding. Now, for me, in terms of my professional experience, uh, it's equipped me with the analytical tools and the understanding that I have for public safety, that I think would be an asset to the commissioners on the committee. And the next question is, well, tell us about your personal and professional background preparing you for being on the traffic commission. Academically, my undergraduate and graduate work was in public administration courses. I graduated from UCLA Law School, and I became an attorney in California, and have been an attorney for many years. But after that, and getting down to the traffic issues here, for ten years I was a member of the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, that is the largest department of its type in the world. Uh, I spent the first three years on the department after graduating from the county, going directly to patrol, and when I worked in the patrol division, I patrolled the streets to prevent crime, when possible, to apprehend people that commit crimes. I spent a good deal of time in traffic enforcement, and I spent a good deal of time in track, in accident, traffic accident investigation. I became a sergeant quickly, and in the administrative division, I was one of, two of the department's personnel that over, gave oversight to the contract law enforcement program. That is a program that provides services to contract cities throughout the county. There was twenty at the time, there's no, I think maybe forty, but Rolling Hills was one of them. And so was Rolling Hills Estates, so was La Mida, and I served them all for various times when I was assigned to the area out of the station where I worked. I left the department in nineteen seventy-one, I became an attorney, and I've spent ballpark fifty years as an attorney in the state, all that time as a civil litigator. I have a Martindale-Hubble rating, it's an AV rating, which is given by the peers that you work with and clients, and it stands for possessing the highest level of professional excellence, skill, and integrity. Uh, I'm proud of that, and I've had that for many, many, many years in every area that I've practiced. One of those areas, and it was a good part of what I did, was traffic enforcement, traffic litigation, and, um, in that regard, handled, over the years, hundreds of cases that involve traffic accident, accident, traffic accident events. Uh, I was lead counsel for Avis-Lacy, uh, for all of their major crash cases, auto crash cases, usually involving catastrophic injuries west of the Mississippi for many years. So, the long and the short of it is, I've investigated traffic accident cases, worked with experts, know what the law is when it comes to, how do you get into trouble, how can you be liable, what causes the accidents, how do you prevent them? And if you can't prevent them, what can you do about them to get the person that did the bad thing? And I've done all of that. For me, and by the way, in that regard, I not only represented Avis, I represented a lot of personal plaintiffs, individuals, and, uh, both for their lawsuits against people that have injured them, and in addition to that, defendants that have been sued for, for allegedly causing injury. Many of these cases were very serious, some of them were some of the biggest auto accident cases ever tried in the United States. They were, um, and there's a, and there's a bonus, a bonus to this, uh, and it wasn't a big part of my practice, but because my wife and I raised and trained and shown horses forever, uh, we've lived here and had them all here, and just love this equestrian community. And I, but I've litigated equestrian accident cases, and I have been asked and been retained, and I never take any money for it, it's all pro bono, um, retained by attorneys prosecuting equestrian accident cases for my expert opinion on, how do we make the trails safer? What is, what is the better kind of equipment to use? Is somebody liable, is it the, is it the rental station, is it the city, is it some, is it some association? Anyway, I've done that, and that's kind of unusual, 'cause most people don't do it. Also, during the fifty years that I've been in the practice of law, I've spent about thirty, thirty-five years of it as a professional mediator, and what that means is that attorneys who can't settle their claims hire other lawyers, like me, and I have been hired by attorneys all the way from San Diego to Seattle, in some very major cases, to serve as the mediator, to get people who cannot settle their claims, to get them to sit down at a table, to go through what's going on, to calm them down, to get them to reason through what their claims are, to strengthen the weaknesses and so forth, and to reach amicable settlements. I've handled hundreds of those cases, and I can count, I had to think about it. It's either two or maybe three cases, of all of those hundreds of cases, that I haven't been able to get the parties to resolve in an amicable way their disputes. Insofar as public service in Rolling Hills is concerned, which is ancillary related to traffic safety, I served three terms as Caballeros president. I served one term as the association director. I was a member of various subcommittees, the one for safety, the one for fire prevention, and others, all during that time. I worked carefully with Sid Croft to review and to fix the trail badge application, that frankly was a disaster, and fixed that, working with Sid, and also did things with resp, with respect to the twenty twenty-four gate policy to make it consistent with the changes that had been made, and we worked out all of the trail safety rules and so forth. The third question that was asked has to do with traffic-related concerns and how to work with fellow commissioners. Uh, to me, this is a short answer, speeding in residential zones, speeding around pedestrians, speeding around equestrians, those areas for me are primary concerns in this community, and I would approach them, 'cause you say, how do you work with fellow commissioners, I'd approach them as they do mediations. I listen carefully, I found out what their concerns are, and clarify their concerns, discuss the various ways that these disputants can reach common ground, and everyone to settle their cases that they couldn't settle before. And so I think that says something about how the process goes that has been very effective. My goals during these mediations, it's, it's in my job as a neutral mediator, is not to push a position, unless I'm asked, to enter a mediator's proposal, I knew that from time to time, but to arrive at a best position, given the, the gives and takes of the dispute. I value diverse viewpoints, and one of the things that I believe in is that robust debate leads to better policy. If nobody shows up and nobody talks, and only one person is talking, you know, you got, you got one point of view that's being expressed. We got wonderful people here, very smart people, I wish they'd be more involved in some of this process, because they have great ideas they could share. Your next question was personal experience with the traffic commission. I served one term with that. Jeff, I think that was with two years, three years, I don't remember the exact length of time, but I was there for quite some time on the traffic commission, and found it to be very cordial, very constructive, nice people, we all had nice chats. We tried to respond to the questions that had been raised by the citizens, questions that had been raised by the council, and had discussions with the sheriff's department regarding who's writing tickets, who's doing what, how are they trying to accomplish the tasks that they've been tasked, that they've been hired and paid to do. I found one thing in the traffic commission when I was there, is that I spent a fair amount of time talking to the officers about why in the world are you spending so much time writing tickets to people who make rolling stops at Crest Road and Caballeros? In my years in law enforcement, and I mean, I literally wrote hundreds of traffic tickets, I've arrested many drunk drivers, I've done a lot of that. I cannot think of the time I've ever written a citation for a rolling stop. You pay money to the sheriff's department to provide services that are gonna benefit the association and the city, and you need to know that you're getting the value that you're paying for. And writing rolling stops in this community, and very few moving violation is not getting the best bang for your buck. I know, 'cause I ran that program, how you get the best bang for your buck, and it's not writing rolling stop citations. The next question had to do with, um, the role of the traffic commission. And to me, uh, I just wrote a note, it's to balance the safety with the rural character of our community. I really love this, I really love this equestrian community, it seems to be eroding all the time, but to balance safety with that, you can evaluate the traffic-related issues and recommend policy or enforcement changes that can make a difference. I think really, one of the principal things that's important is to educate the people that live here, to get them involved and get them participating in some of the discussions take place. Um, some of these issues are complicated, I can think of one that's current that I, I just heard about, and that is some disputes over these e-bikes. And if you take a look at it, I mean, you, you think about it for two seconds, and you think there's a lot of different points of view. Parents who want their kids to have bikes, kids that wanna have their bikes, kids that wanna take them on the trails, parents that say, no, you cannot, I have, I'm a horseman, I don't want them on the trails. You get a lot of conflicting views. You gotta get people involved, you gotta get them involved in open forums, where they come in and they express their points of view, and you try to assess all of this. To me, and this is a personal bias, Trump. Let me put it this way, safety in this community, I've seen too many people hurt. Safety in this community trumps some of these other concerns. And I think it's very important to get that message to the members, to try to, to try to resolve ways where you've got multi-use streets, multi-use trails, if that's the case, and that's another discrete issue that I could talk about, but won't, we don't have time. But, um, those are some of the things that we need to work, work out, so that we can ensure that we've got public safety in this community, that we've got mobility for the residents, and they're able to get around, um, we have clear comma, clear communication with the members, and, uh, and transparency. I've been an advocate of that from day one, moving to this community. What would be a positive outcome of the traffic commission work is number five. And that's fairly simple, develop measurable improvements in traffic safety in the community, to promote increased compliance with the traffic laws, slow down the speeders, promote enhanced protection for the motorists and the pedestrians and the equestrians. When people are speeding through this committee at sixty and seventy miles an hour, as some do, they're endangering everyone. Equestrians are particularly at risk. And to increase the level of public trust by ensuring that residents feel and hear and see that when they express they concern, their concerns, that they are going to be addressed by the commission, and with the commission's recommendations to the council, addressed by the council. Maybe they don't always agree, but that's the way the cookie crumbles. Next, item number eight is the potential conflicts of interest or obstacles, if appointed. I don't know of any, and if any were to occur, I'd recuse myself. I only had one, I had only one opportunity to do that, only one time, I needed to do it with the association, and I recused myself from one matter that was in litigation. And, uh, and if anything happened here, and I were appointed, and there was a recruit, a recusal situation, I would recuse myself. I, at all the years that I practiced, I mean, we're talking about a half a century, I've never found myself in a position, in any case that I was ever in, that I had to recuse myself from anything. I don't get myself into those kinds of jams or try not to. Attendance at meetings and being prepared is, um, item number seven. During my service on the board, I always attended, and have been thanked by at least one of the members at one point. She says, always pleased that you're always two hundred percent prepared. I try to be prepared, not always two hundred percent, but I do try to be prepared when I go to the meetings, and I try to attend them, and pay attention when I'm there. Eight, any other information about me that I believe you should know? Not really that I can think of, except this is just something that is, a perspective that I have that is not always shared, since I was on the board, that is not shared with all of the members of the board. And, and the board seems to take the position that, when I was only on their one term, but they kept the position that safety is the city's business. Safety is the city's responsibility. We do other things, we look at the easements, we do other things, but safety is not our job. I never agreed with that, I mean, in terms of my point of view. It seems to me, in this community, safety is a collegial and joint responsibility. You don't get things done here if you don't have the city council and the, and the directors on the homeowner association working in concert, and there's lots of things that you can do, I can just, I could rattle them off, things that could be done that don't cost you any money, but would be very effective, and it's, it's collegial in nature, in nature. After many years of arguing that point, I finally saw things from the, uh, from, um, Mark Rindell, where he talked about the safety issues that they were addressing. So, the, the association's come around, but I think it's important for the city council to know that I don't think this is all your business. Some of it is, but some of it's the association, and a lot of it is overlap, and I think that's important to know. I would say that if I was appointed, I would approach the commission, not as an advocate for any single viewpoint, but as a facilitator of what I would try to make principled, evidence-based discussion. I believe in respectful debate. I am committed to ensuring that every voice at the table is heard and considered. My goal is not to lead by authority, and I know there's some, there was some talk at an interview I had once upon a time where they thought, well, you've got all this experience, are you gonna be, are you, are you not gonna listen to other people? You're going to, you know, bully your point of view, or push your point of view maybe too far. I see, I see that issue differently. I think, when I look at my, if I'm on the sidelines and looking me as a candidate, I would be thinking, can you think of anybody in the city of Rolling Hills that has these kinds of credentials? And I don't know of anybody that does. But, you don't lead by imposing your will on other people, you just don't do it. I don't do it in, in, when I, when I, it, it, when I arrested people, I never had to beat anybody up. I talked them to the radio car, I talked them to the station. When I wrote tickets, I was always polite. When I was in trial, I always try, I always try to win over the jury with reason. And when I'm in mediations, when you get people that hate each other and just want to continue the fight, I tell them not to let passion interfere with sweet reason, cool it, get down, let's talk about the facts, and show them a way, help show them a way, where they can figure out, yeah, it makes some sense for us to get it resolved. That's how I would approach it with the, on the commission, that's my orientation, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any quick questions?
So, I had a few questions. The first was regarding signage, and, uh, just your personal feeling right now, do you feel regarding traffic signage? Do you think there's about now, is there too much, too little, about right? What is your thought about signage around the city right now?
One of the things, you need signage, I mean, to the extent the signage is required by Vanessa, you know, she's on the, on the, uh, the expert that shows up at the commission meetings, and she talks about the things that you need to do in order to comply with the law, you gotta comply with the law. Less signage is better than more signage, but I think you have to have signage that is accurate. We have radar, I mean, we had a situation a year or so ago, where the department claimed that they couldn't provide any radar services, but we still had radar signs up. And I, one of the things I did, I'm, I wasn't on the, I wasn't on the board, I wasn't on the commission, but I just reminded the, the council, that if you're not, if you don't have radar enforcement in the city, then get the signs down. And two days later, they had the sign, they, they, they had deputies with radio cars that were able to use radar, and that's an important thing to have. So, the rural, this rural community does best with less signage, but some of it's needed. You try not to do it any more than necessary, and, uh, and it should be, if you can, make it something consistent with what looks nice here.
And then that leads to my second question, which you brought up, is the traffic engineer. Obviously, the law is a law, but a lot of his recommendation, do you feel you should always vote the engineer? The engineer is just a, some input that goes with anything else, or can you vote against the engineer? Or what is your feeling about if the traffic engineer recommends something?
Well, I've recommended things to the traffic commission without, you know, I don't, not for sole permission, but can we, can we do this? One of the things that I've talked about with her is, is why don't we do something with, uh, having a default speed limit for commercial vehicles? They're harder, they're bigger, take it, it takes longer to stop, et cetera, and so I've suggested things to her about that. I thought having a single, in this, in this rural community, in this type of community with horses, no leash laws, lots of people on the street, may be reducing the speed limit. She tells me, well, you can't do that, you've gotta do tests, and you may be, you, you try it, and you may end up with higher speed limits than not. I don't know that I agree with that. It seems, it seems to me that if you wanted to, if you had Art go out and put up about, you know, twenty-five mile per hour speeding signs throughout the whole community, he, he could do it, and nobody would complain for him very much, and if they did, they wouldn't get very far.
You had, and it's an issue that I think is coming up and beginning, gonna become more common, uh, the issue of e-bikes. And it's not just children, it's adults on bicycles. Not regarding the trails, bicycles and motorized vehicles, including e-bikes, are illegal on trails, period.
Yes.
That's what I'm talking about. Bicycles and e-bikes on our streets, which are very narrow, and it's very dangerous. What are your thoughts about making it safer for bike riders?
This is, this is gonna be not a totally direct answer, but that is something that should be reviewed very carefully. I know that when you talk about the state of California, you have all these public parks, they've got rules and regulations, you've got cities that have talked about shared lanes, et cetera. There's all kinds of things that you can think, you, 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 that potentially could mitigate the problem. The e-bike shouldn't be on the riddle trails in this community, as far as I'm concerned.
We're not talking about.
But on the.
You heard me say that.
But on the straight, but on the street, yes, I think. I think it's a challenge, but these kids are at risk. Motorists at risk because they see them and, you know, they pass too closely. You gotta do something, and it's something that would be a very interesting thing to look in. There'd be lots of data out there to look at, the ways, different ways, different communities have resolved the problem. You look at them all, you sort through them, and you come up with, you think, what might be a good plan, the best plan for this particular city to minimize the risk.
And lastly, just a question for you personally. Would you refuse yourself if it was regarding the discussion of a walking path versus bike path on the north side of Crest Road?
A walking path or bike path on the north side of Crest Road?
That would obviously go right in front of your house.
No, I know. I'm not quite sure. If somebody said that they wanted me to recuse myself because I have a residence on Crest Road, that would be affected by it, I think I would recuse myself. But, I mean, I think that would be the thing to do. I might, I would hope that that wouldn't happen because Caballeros has now that turned into a bridle trail as well.
As you said earlier, safety is the purview of the city. And ultimately, safety is the purview of the city. And we're very collegial and polite, but for instance, if they hadn't opened that gate on Crest for egress during fire, we ultimately would have forced it to be opened. So it is collegial, but ultimately, safety is the purview of the city. And if it requires something, then it requires something.
Understand this, though. Caballeros and the association has turned the north side of Crest Road into a bridle trail. And so if you had it.
No. So, hi.
Both sides.
Well, thank you very much, just because I gotta keep the time even. So, just, no, you're good. So, you can sit there, and Bill, come up, just switch, and then we're gonna start over again.
Oh, enjoy listening.
Good evening, good evening, everyone, and thank you all for having me. I very much appreciate it, and thank you for staying so late. So, I'm tempted to say now for something different. I've lived in Rolling Hills for a total of one year, maybe one month, if I'm really counting up seriously. Before that, we lived, my wife and I lived in Vantage Point, just on the other side of Crenshaw, right on Crest Road, another gated, guarded community, where I think I learned a lot that would be valuable here also. So to directly answer the first question, why do I want to serve on the traffic commission? It's really simple. I enjoy being involved in the community I live in, and I would just like to do something to help. It's really that simple. I've been on boards of directors of every community I've ever lived in, including Vantage Point most recently. I was on the board of directors, I was the board secretary. And I was head of the special security committee. We had to form a security committee about five years ago because we were just being devastated by one of the Chilean crime gangs. Something like 16 of 64 houses that we had were broken into. And they were all, you know, smash and grab, gone before any police officers could get there. So, I've always been on boards, including the very first townhouse community that my wife and I lived in back in northern Virginia, where we both grew up and spent our entire working lives. And I was on the board where we took the responsibility for the board over from the builder. And that was interesting, endless discussions about how much money the builder should put in our account and how much money they did not want to put in our account. So it was lots of experience on boards in the, in the community. So how does your personal and professional background prepare you for being on the traffic commission? So, I'm, as most of you all know, I think I'm an electrical engineer. That's what I've done my entire career. I have a master's degree in electrical engineering and an MBA. And so that's what my career was. My last full, and I am retired. I'm on two corporate boards of directors and two or three academic boards of directors. So my last role, I ran a 3,300-person organization in, once again, in northern Virginia. We were heavily involved in cybersecurity. All of my work was for the intelligence community. So if you can think of any agency that goes by a three-letter acronym, I have worked for them. Never directly worked for the government, except for some internships when I was in college. But my entire career has been working in private industry. Always, the majority of my clients were government. So it was a, I want to say a magical career. I was just in the right place at the right time for a lot of things. You know, I was in cybersecurity long before anybody thought cybersecurity would be the good term. We used to call it computer-to-computer communications and, you know, various information warfare, all of those ancient terms that are now part of cybersecurity. I'm on several academic boards. The George Washington University National Engineering Board, where I'm a member emeritus. And the emeritus is important because I stopped going to the meetings when we moved from the northern Virginia area to California, and they needed to make space on the board for somebody who could really attend the meetings. I'm on the Purdue Engineering Board, and I'm on the Virginia Tech Applied Research Corporation Board. The reason I'm telling, the reason I'm bothering you with all of this past information is that I feel like I have a lot of experience working with people. Like I said, I've been on boards my, pretty much my entire working career. I understand how boards work, and I think I am able to get along with people pretty well after years of doing this. So, traffic-related concerns. So, and I guess, well, one more thing I almost forgot to mention. I spent five years on the Rolling Hills Estates Traffic and Safety Committee. And I became close friends with Pam Schacter, I don't know if any of you all know her. David Waba was the city representative on the board. Jessica Slosson was sort of our administrative representative. Any of those people, I haven't asked them, but I'm sure they would be willing to provide a reference if you, if you wanted one. But, and we wrestled with, we had quarterly meetings. Rolling Hills Estates did have a lot of traffic issues, mostly because I think they have a lot more traffic than we do here in Rolling Hills, of course. And number one issue was always PD, PV drive north. You know, what do we do about it from 3:00 until 6:00 in the evening if you're going toward, heck, if you're going in that direction? And unfortunately, I don't think we ever came up with any good, good solution, except use alternate roads. But that's sort of the main highway of Rolling Hills Estates. But, so I do have that experience on a traffic and safety committee. So, traffic-related concerns. I will agree with my colleague in that the number one issue that I see is speeding on Crest Road. When I lived in Vantage Point, I would walk the dog along Crest Road, of course, on the other side of our gate. Speeding there was much, much worse. I think the average speed was, must have been 60 miles an hour on Crest Road. The speed limit was 45, but, and, you know, really, very few people paid attention to the speed limit. And while I was living in Vantage Point, we had at least three accidents where people ran into that white picket fence, not picket fence, a board fence that you see along Crest Road, right outside of Vantage Point. Two times, we never found the person who ran into it. One time, we found them only because their license plate came off, and it was laying there next to the fence. And fortunately, I was able to get a picture of it before we, and the person did come back and take it. But we had a picture of it. So, at any rate, I walked the dog here in Rolling Hills along Crest Road. We live about two houses away from Crest on Quail Ridge Road North. And, you know, it's a beautiful location. I walk up the hill to the fire station and then walk along Crest, depending on which way the dog wants to go. She gets the choice, so we go one direction or another. And I really am amazed by how fast the cars go, especially toward the Crest Gate. And it's downhill, you know, you have to be careful. I cannot say that I haven't find myself, found myself going more than 30 miles an hour because if you, if you don't do anything, you coast faster than 30 miles an hour. So I think, it worries me because there are horse riders on there. There are a couple of, I'm gonna call them older gentlemen who walk along Crest Road quite often, and they walk in the road because I think one of them is a little bit unstable and doesn't want to walk in the mulch path and everything. And most of the cars are pretty good about going over the center line to let those people have an easy walk. But combination of dogs, older people walking, cars, horses, I keep thinking it's just a, there's a disaster waiting to happen there. So that would be my number one concern. And out of fairness, we don't use too many roads here in Rolling Hills. You know, I don't drive around the neighborhoods. We use Portuguese Bin Road, Crest Road, and of course, our own road. But that's really about it. So I don't see the entire community, other than when we first moved in, we just drove around a little bit to see what we had. But most of the roads are really too curvy and too narrow to do much speeding. But Crest, you know, is, you know, I think, like I said, I think we have a problem there just waiting to happen. So that's my main traffic concern. The other area I would pursue is, we need, in my opinion, if we don't already have it, an interface with the traffic commissions in Rolling Hills Estates, RPV, Torrance, and PVE. We're all connected here on the hill. It's not five individual, you know, totally autonomous cities. But, you know, what if, if RHE decides to make some changes in Portuguese Bin Road North, that's going to affect almost every one of us here. If RPV does something on Hawthorne, going down the hill to the ocean, you know, that's going to affect every one of us here. So my feeling is that if we don't already do it, we need to set up some sort of regular liaison to discuss traffic issues with every, with all of the committees on the hill. And of course, I, by saying that, I'm volunteering to work on that if I do get appointed to the committee. But I, I think that's something that would ease traffic in the entire area. It's not just us, it's everyone. So what do I feel the role of the traffic commission is? You know, I'm assuming the traffic commission is an advisory organization that makes recommendations to the city council, and it does not really have the power to enact anything themselves. So in that, excuse me, in that advisory role, you know, I know there are periodically requests for new driveways, stop signs, everything we can do to keep our city streets safe. I think that's the role of the traffic committee. And we have a lot to deal with, you know, the subject of e-bikes came up. I think you're absolutely right. It's, you know, many of them are as fast as cars, and they can go much faster than 30 miles an hour in all of our streets. And even bicycles, many bicycles are faster than 30 miles an hour. I don't see as many bicycles as I do e-bikes actually up on Crest Road. And I apologize for focusing on Crest. I think that's sort of the main street where we have speeding, and we have issues that, that could be, could be a problem. So a positive outcome of the traffic commission's work. I think my colleague said it, I couldn't say it any better than he did, you know, continued safe travel and traffic in all streets of Rolling Hills. I think that's the role of the, of the traffic commission. Any potential conflicts of interest or obstacles? Certainly not that I'm aware of. And if there ever was one, I would be happy to recuse myself if that was the right thing to do. No, no issues there. I just don't think I possibly have any, any conflicts of interest. Attending the meetings on the fourth Thursday at 8:30 a.m. or whatever time anybody wanted to have a meeting, that would never be a problem, it would be a priority. I think my record for attending meetings of the Traffic and Safety Committee of Rolling Hills Estates was 100% attendance. And I would certainly do the same here. And I would also like to note that in the various boards that I have been on, the corporate boards and academic boards, I can only remember one board meeting in six or seven, whatever's been years of attending quarterly board meetings, that I have missed a meeting. And I'll claim that was not my fault. That was a hurricane last summer that messed up the flight schedule so badly that I just gave up. Could not get to Washington, D.C., and if I could, I could not get back home. So, missed one meeting, very, very sorry about that. So, any other information that I think you should know? I did, in Vantage Point, I did gain some very valuable experience. As I mentioned, we had to form a special security committee, and I was head of the special security committee, I think somewhat because of my, my background at work, and also because, somewhat because I don't think anybody else wanted to do it. So I was willing to. We had meetings, we met with the sheriff's deputies. We did everything we could to inform the neighbors. And, you know, we walked a fine line because people were worried about things like property values. If it became known that Vantage Point was being, I don't want to call it terrorized, but, you know, it literally seemed like every month, a different house would get broken into. And they were all on the perimeter of the neighborhood, and the burglars simply climbed those six-foot wrought iron fences that we had. They then went into somebody's backyard, believe it or not, hoisted themselves up onto the second floor balcony, smashed the master bedroom window, and took a pillowcase from the master bed and filled it with anything that appeared to be of value. So my job as head of the committee was to go, I don't know if it was my job, but as head of the committee, I visited every house that was broken into. And it was a sad thing. People would be crying, people had lost family heirlooms. One of, one of my neighbors in particular, they, the wife wouldn't even come downstairs and talk. She was so upset, I had to talk to the husband. But you can picture, you know, jewelry that's been in one's family for years. So we walked a fine line about communicating because I felt that if the house next door to you is broken into, the neighbors need to know that. And so I would be responsible for all. And so I would be responsible for all the communications, and we would never list the house address, of course. I would name the street. You know, we only had three streets in Vantage Point, so I would name the street and the, sort of the MO, but it was definitely the Chilean crime gangs, and it wasn't until, I think it was the FBI and the LAPD who was able to make arrests and actually find a lot of things that were stolen, and I don't know what they did with the crime members, but many of them were 18 years old and under, you know, sent over to specifically rob houses in various wealthy neighborhoods. So I learned a lot that, during that experience, worked with the police almost on a daily basis, and even got to ride in the backseat of a police car, which I have no intention of ever doing again, partly because we used the police car to go get next to some of our trails, and when the deputies exited the front of the car, they seemed to forget that a couple of us were in the back, and of course, you can't get out of the back of a, a police car, that's the whole plan. So they're walking down the trail, and we're pounding on the window saying, hey, wait a minute. But, so, and I'm not saying we need that sort of experience here, but, you know, I, I just wonder, if we ever have a crime situation here, it would be better to be prepared in advance than to react after something happens. But, you know, we, we, we learned a lot of things, such as, you know, never keep any valuables in the master bedroom. That's the first place the criminals go. If you have a kid's room, keep them there. If you have a garage, that's even better, because garages tend to be kind of, I used the word, disorganized, and I became good friends with Lieutenant Mike White. Do you know Mike?
He was after my time.
Okay. Yeah, he was at the Lumina Station, but he would come by, he'd actually come by and see me every time he was in the neighborhood. So developed good relations with the, with the police, and we learned a lot about how to simply protect houses.
Okay. Hey, Jim, you want to ask your...
I do. Regarding traffic signage in the, in the city, do you think that there's too little, too much, about right? What are your thoughts about signage in our rural community?
The, the only signage I might complain about is that there are a couple of signs that have fallen down, and some more that are so faded that you can't read them. They're not stop signs. You know, they are speed limit 15 on residential roads here and there, and everything like that, but, you know, I think the stop signs are visible. I really don't notice any cars going through stop signs. People always seem to stop when they come out on side roads. So I would, I would say, with the exception of replacing and repairing some of those older signs, and, you know, some of them get hard to see at night when they, when they get old.
Then, again, you're an engineer, we have a traffic engineer with the committee. Do you feel that, obviously, if it's a law, it's a law, but suggesting do you typically feel that you should go along with the traffic engineer? Do you think that's just input for the committee? What are your feelings about, is it an absolute when the engineer tells you to do something?
Well, that's a question I had not thought about until about 30 minutes ago, but I think the traffic engineer would be an input to the committee. You know, we, the committee members live here, maybe the traffic engineer does not live here, I'm not sure, but I think it's important to get all possible perspectives and inputs on the committee, and I would say the traffic committee, the traffic engineer would be one of those inputs, a, a very important input, you know, we could not ignore it. But as I said, I, I think it's one of several inputs that, that we would consider.
And lastly, you heard us, and you alluded yourself, bicycles and e-bikes, which are more prominent, and it's not just children, it's adults.
Right.
And again, we're not referencing the trails. Bicycles, motorized vehicles, e-bikes are not a lot on the trails.
Right.
Our streets are quite narrow, and it's very difficult. As you mentioned, people walking, the cars don't, so what are your thoughts about e-bikes, or what could be done about bicycles and e-bikes to make safety for all?
Well, I think in most of our streets, there's not enough room for a bike lane. For that matter, I don't know that I've seen any bike lanes, but it's, you know, it's, they're, they're legal, it's kind of hard to keep them off the streets. You know, I, I do agree that it's a significant safety issue, and something the traffic commission would, I think would be well advised to consider.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Warner, you mentioned that on, when you served in the Rolling Hills Estates Traffic and Safety Commission, there was a member of the city staff or council that was on part of that?
There, there, there was, David Waba.
Okay, so he's a city staff member?
Yes.
He was a member of the commission?
Yes. Or, or at least he attended all of our meetings. I'm not sure whether he was a member.
Okay. The reason I bring it up is because our traffic commission is a little bit different. We actually, myself, I'm the chair of the traffic commission, which is a little unusual for commissioners, usually they're made up of non-elected.
Right.
So I just wanted to bring that up. And then the other thing was, I don't know if you're aware, but Rolling Hills, the city of Rolling Hills is not subject to the California vehicle code. It, because they're private roads, they're, we have our own municipal code that, to some degree, follows the California vehicle code, but when the sheriff write a ticket, it's not to the California code. It's just a little, a little quirk we have in this community, so it's somewhat different. And, and we operate in, under different rules as a result.
I did not know that. Okay. All right. Okay. Safe, safety is still safety.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know. We still...
Right.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you coming down.
Sure.
All right. So, do we adjourn this and do it again? When do we?
If the council is able to make a decision, you, you can right now. Otherwise, we'll have to adjourn and continue to another meeting date.
So, can we do it at, we have to have a whole separate meeting, or can we do it at one of our regular meetings? I don't want to have a whole separate...
Yes. It could be at a regular meeting.
Can we do that? Is that okay?
I'm sure that we adjourn the meeting, we table the actual discussion and selection to the next city council meeting.
All right. All right. All right. All right. Then we adjourn this meeting.